The Merrimack Valley Planning Commission and their work that they've been doing with us on a housing production plan for the town of Newbury. We've already had one session with them and this would be our second. And they have a preliminary report that they have, I guess it'll be presenting some of the findings tonight. So with that, our first item on the agenda is meeting minutes. And again, thank you, Rachel, for doing these. I appreciate it. Are there any comments on the minutes?
What's happening?
There was an email.
There was an email.
Okay. I didn't get all the emails.
Look good, Nate.
Actually, the only three who can vote on them are John, Jim, and Pete anyway.
How was that? You were absent. I can give second. Second, okay. I, third. So all those in favor? Aye. Again, thank you for doing those. Financial reports for July, August, and September. Our payroll warrants for the town planner, that would be Martha. Payroll 1803, paid period July 5th of 2017. Payroll 1804 for paid period 8/19/17. Payroll 1805 for the payroll period 9/2/17. Payroll 1806 for paid period ending 9/16/17. Payroll 1807 for period ending 9/30/17. So that's all for the warrants for salaries. And then expense invoices, Verizon Wireless, were paid on July 30th and on September, no, on August 30th and on September 27th. Massachusetts Association of Planning Directors membership was paid on August 30th. And the North of Boston Media Group public hearing legal ad was for, on September 19th. What was that for?
That was a public hearing for the recreational marijuana.
Recreational marijuana. So that's all the things that were signed by the chair with this new requirement that we have to have those things signed. So, old business, potential zoning amendments for spring 2018, annual town meeting, number one, update, or the only one really on, although I did want to talk a bit about the news of minutes if we could, update on the solar bylaw revision. George, you doing that?
Yes, I am. Handout. Makes life easier for everybody. Glad I made it. Just enough. The solar bylaw subcommittee had three meetings with Martha, Peter Pecos, and me, except I missed the middle meeting. And a lot of study of the present bylaw, a lot of suggestions that we could look at. toured everything and showed initial discussions about overlay district and commercial BLI zones. An overlay district would need to be in a location which includes high tension power lines in or nearby in the district. Now, this grid location and connection can be made without great difficulty or expense, possible solar project siting within an overlay district would likely make the project economically unfeasible. Martin Burns and other environmentally sensitive land take up a large part of what might be possible overlay district. What is left is a small amount of usable land off Main Street to serve as an overlay district. It's very small. For zoning alone, solar project development may be limited to BLI and commercial districts, taking agricultural and residential out of the equation. If approved by the attorney general, a new bylaw limiting locations to BLI, commercial, or BLI alone is likely, then that is a coercive approach for a new sample bylaw. Now, Arthur will be asking the office of the attorney general for copies of recent solar filings, bylaw filings, and approvals for study. Present bylaw only covers ground under the rays, don't worry about what future bylaws will converge to present bylaw, include all present and future types of solar installations. One current example is solar canopy. The study of the current bylaw has considered changes to provisions which are not subjective in nature, to the extent speculative issues can be eliminated, so much the better. We discussed changing siting criteria and marked up a handout. Do you think, Martha, you had those?
I thought we had a few revisions, so I haven't.
Oh, okay. Fine. And the real question for the board is, is to, do we modify the present bylaw or draft a new bylaw? So let me give you some other material about solar canopies and siting criteria.
Are you all close to making a recommendation about what should be done?
Not really, because we need your input. Once we have your input about what ought to happen, then we can go ahead and make up a presentation for that. Is that everything? Now, solar.
Oh, this is, this is what you're doing, parking lots.
Yeah, parking lots, actually on farm fields, so long as you can continue farming beneath it, pedestrian walkways on top of building Francisco storage buildings, that's an example. So this is what's coming up with the new rules and regulations from Department of Energy.
What is the status of their proposed changes? And what's the timeline for having them effective?
I think they're coming up in the first part of the year.
Yeah, I think they're anticipating, I believe, by March. So the SREC program is still kind of in effect, the SREC 2s until then, for the extended SMART program, takes longer to finalize.
SMART is the program under the new DOJ order.
That's right.
And supposedly, from what we've had seen, the benefits are not as widely available or just widely applicable?
They're not. There are certain things for which incentives will not be granted at all. If you locate an array in prime forest land, prime agricultural land, wetlands, and a few other locations like that, there'll be no incentive. So that's one of the things that we've talked about, and actually, here in the siting criteria. So wetlands, farmland soils, prime forest, biomass, two core habitat, priority habitat, permanently protected open space, land designated as forest land under chapter 61, or archaeological sites.
So when we have, just, let's assume that we keep the existing area saying it's all AR, we're going to put solar arrays, would we ever then go back into that and say, no, let's go in and take out primary forest, take out wetland, take out all those things?
That's what we're recommending. If we revise the existing bylaw, even if we do a new one, I think that would be the recommendation to eliminate.
All those things that they're saying, by the way, you're not getting any money for those things.
Right. And so hopefully that would take away some of the issues that we've had.
Do you have any sense for how much that is in terms of the town?
I mean, if you look at the priority habitat, I think that was a fair amount.
Yeah, it's my guess.
And wetlands, yeah, wetlands certainly cover.
Well, for example, what about areas like Martin Burns and other kind of inland, inland areas? They're untouchable, right?
Yeah, they're permanently protected.
Because they're not in, are they in AR? Are they zoned AR?
And they add ultra residential district, yeah. But they're permanently protected, so they would be out of the equation.
And the build forward area as well?
And it's also, and crane.
And crane.
So all of those.
So a substantial amount is not available.
So it's quite, quite a bit. So that was, you know, that was one thought to at least put that in there, so that those areas are automatically tapped.
So the other thing you said was, we had this example some time ago, when former selectmen was interested in having his property right looked at, and one of the reasons they didn't move forward is exactly what you said.
Connectivity.
Connectivity. Can we also look at areas of connectivity and say, well, this is so difficult to connect that this shouldn't be considered, or do you let that up to the marketplace?
Yeah, I think you leave that up to the marketplace. If somebody's willing to pay some, you know, some of the money to improve the connection.
Because that's what has to be done.
Negative evolve over time and age.
It's enormous, it's enormous amount of cost today.
It is a lot of cost, and especially with the incentives, the way the incentives are going to work, it's going to be a set number, and then it will be reduced by, I believe it's 4% per year. So, you know, the whole incentive structure is coming down in any case.
These are just things I've thought of, which I never really, but do, does having a, a district that basically says all AR district, does that, do we have any sense that that might discourage other types of development from moving forward, such as housing? I don't think that.
I don't think so.
But it just occurred to me that, I mean, if you allow that, and would that discourage somebody from moving forward with a housing project? And I have no examples of that and no history of others, just wondering and asking the question.
Essentially, that's what we have right now.
And we haven't?
People are, you know, people are looking.
They've been knocking down your door?
They have recently.
If I look along Route 1, there are power lines on top of the poles in the district, BLI district, which may be heavy enough to take a connection, but National Grid would have to tell us that.
Yeah.
Right. But, you know, I think my inclination would be to leave it to the marketplace, leave it to the developer. We issued the RFP for the, you know, solar on the landfill, and, you know, granted, it's probably not going to be as big as some of the other ones that we've looked at, but I don't think connectivity was, you know, was the issue there, even though it's not right next to.
It's really not right next to.
But it's right down to Route 1.
Right.
It's not, it's not far.
It's less than a quarter mile, I guess.
So, you know, I think the developer would have to do their financial cost benefit.
But aside from the two Borregos, we really haven't had any demand?
No, we've had inquiries. We had, you know, we had the one down on Scotland Road, which ended up being approved. And I did have an inquiry about one on Green Street on a fairly large piece of property, but nothing's gone forward so far on that one.
And the Jackman property? Interesting. So what are your next steps?
Our next step is to get a recommendation from the board within two weeks.
Cut the next meeting?
Yes.
Or, or from now, until then, you want input from all members to think about what you passed out to get back your thoughts?
Then you can come into the board and give us the answer, or your suggestions, and then we go forward from there.
I think the big question for me, looking at it and looking at the most current model bylaw, whether we would actually like to be specific to the entire bylaw so that it covers all possible solar permutations, you know, as of right for rooftops, the site plan review that we have, special permit, canopies, and various other things that we really don't cover right now, maybe it comes out of the special permit section of the zoning laws under special regulations or something else. So, you know, there's some holes right now, and in a sense, it's a misnomer to put it under special permit, because we've also got the site plan review criteria there for the solar, smaller ones.
That reminds me, in your minutes, Rachel, you went through the...
Joe?
You went through the green...
Those are the green communities.
The green communities and their criteria?
Right, and I had a meeting with them today.
And you had a meeting with them today, but I want to go through the criteria as Rachel has it enumerated. The town, in order to be designated a green community, the town must meet five criteria, including creation of an energy reduction plan, let's assume that's easy, two...
It's actually not complicated.
Adoption, I said, let's say, two, adoption of as of right siting in designated locations for renewable alternative energy generation, research and development, or manufacturing facilities.
Right, and that's one of the things that we talked about today.
How easy is that to?
Well, it would be very easy to, we already allow research and development in the business of industrial, so if we just added renewable energy research and development in the table, it used to be four conditions, that's all.
Or does it have to be R&amp;D, or is it just research? I thought it just meant, oh, I see.
Well, that would probably be the easiest one to do, as opposed to trying to identify some sites where we would.
That is. And then the third one is the adoption of an expedited application process for where you allow that. Right? So where you have it as of right, you can do it in the BLI, you have an expedited process. Do other towns do that yet?
I think about 260 towns now that designate green community.
So they've done it?
So they've done it.
So we just have to check that out.
Right.
So do you want to elaborate further on what you talked to Joe about today?
Yeah, it was Joe and Neil Duffy, who's heading up the program for the state. And so we talked specifically, we are the recipients of a metagrad through NVPC, which is designed to help communities prepare themselves for designation. And we kind of have to take a step back. Neil Duffy said that he would come and talk to the selectmen about the program a little bit more. I had a brief discussion with them a few months ago. And he would come and go into it in more detail, because obviously, you know, they need to be on board if we're going to do this. We had considered it several years ago, at that point, one of the requirements which still is stretch energy code. And at that time, which was around 2010, I think, it was felt that the energy code was really, especially during the research, was humorous. And so that was kind of tabled at that point on Sam's recommendation, but he now feels it would be appropriate to go forward. So the energy reduction plan is one thing, and that involves us providing them with a bunch of information on our energy use, including, you know, fuel that we use for our town vehicles, buildings, street lighting, parking lighting, all of that stuff. And then that will get put into this mass energy insight program to give us our baseline use. And NVPC will then work to come up with a reduction plan, so we reduce our energy use by 20% over five years.
Then what are the financial benefits of the green community?
You get an upfront sum, which for us would be about $134,000 for just being designated, and then it makes us eligible for grant funding that's not available.
For like, for like, the police department?
Right, energy improvements, or for the police station to, you know, put renewable energy.
Is there, in your sense, is there any, is there currently any pushback on something like this in the town?
I think that, I think the biggest concern was the requirement, which was not, I probably didn't explain it very well, it wasn't really very well understood, about the as of right siting.
Right.
I think it was interpreted being as of right siting for solar or other renewable energy.
Right, and it is for anything?
And it's for R&amp;D related to that, which I think would be the easiest for us to deal with.
Yeah. So then, oh, then I misunderstood. So it's not for a Borrego?
Doesn't have to be.
It could be.
Could be. Doesn't have to be.
I mean, an area like the Alamo, there's no residents. I'm not sure if as of right, it might not, I don't know what you think.
And it would still go through.
You take your mind.
Yeah, I mean, it's a big question. It would still go through site plan review, so it's not, you know, it's not that it goes in without any kind of review process, but site plan.
But it doesn't need a special permit?
Right. But, you know, special permit is up or down on the use, site plan review is not, so.
Okay. Okay, so that answers my question on that. So I think our master plan update, the most important thing is, George has been sending me corrections in pages and pages on community facilities. You've got to be here. Are you not, is you not here?
Not here.
Anyway, so as soon as I get, I forward them to Martha, and Martha's the keeper of the documents at this point in time. And we have done housing, economic development, land use, closed on community facilities.
Right.
And transportation is closed. Did you get the comments I sent to you on Tony's?
Yes, I forwarded them to Tony.
To Tony?
Yeah.
So that's like five, and then what we're waiting for is the cultural.
Cultural resources and natural resources.
Natural resources.
And Rachel very kindly reformatted both of those to match the template.
And you met?
And I had a meeting last Thursday with the historical commission regarding the historic and cultural resources section of it, asked them to look at the revisions that John and I made, and look at some of the data there, the inventory that's on MapRIS, and some of the other things, to see if they need to be updated, and to also take a look at the goals, goals and strategies. They've also been provided with a copy of the relevant section of the master plan survey and comments that came back.
Might it be helpful to give them a deadline?
I did.
Excellent.
They weren't sure that they were going to meet it, but they're going to be able to meet it, but I asked them to have it by their next meeting.
Oh, that's great. That's wonderful.
So, Jan has been sending information to them to help them think about goals.
And what's your latest thought about how we move forward on natural resources?
And I do have a group of people who have said that they would be willing to look at it. What I'd like to do is mark out the section as we did with the other ones, and get it to this group for review. Kristen Grubbs said that she would be willing to look at the adaptation, the, you know, Great Marsh, the resulting.
Kristen is from Great Marsh?
Right.
Right?
The adaptation plan, and see how.
Oh, great.
That can be plugged into it.
Because that's the missing thing in my mind, only because I haven't seen it, but that's the reason. So if that could, if she could take a look at that, that would be really good.
So she said she would help me, and I guess the question is, next, we're talking about a master plan meeting.
Yeah, on a master plan meeting on the...
On November 1st.
November 1st.
Right, which is Marshall, so he could make, and Tony said he's going to make.
Tony can make, so we're going to focus on transportation. And then, I'm not, there's a lot to digest in the transportation section. Can we send that out? We don't have it back to Tony yet.
Well, we could certainly send out what he sent us.
Send out the two-page implementation plan. That's usually enough, don't you think?
Well, it might be good to have the rest of the element as well.
Well, if you think, if you're comfortable sending it out, okay. I just thought you wanted to read this comment.
Let me check with him and see.
Check with him, and if it's November 1st, that's like right away.
Yes, two weeks, it's on.
Yeah, so let's, let's get it out.
Does that work for everybody, November 1st to do? So that would be, again, maybe at 7:30 after our Borrego plan.
And we do have a relatively full first half hour that.
Right, right. So we might actually, I kind of ran through, we've got three appearances, so we might actually need to meet 15 minutes.
Is that okay? Maybe at 6:45?
6:45.
Okay. Georgetown, we do have to take a position on this, huh?
Yeah, and basically, all the funding they need is a one-sided statement on our letter head saying that.
We grant them a waiver. Everybody know what the issue is here?
Yes.
Anybody have a problem?
No.
I don't either.
So somebody could give a...
A motion? Motion maker?
I moat to Grand Georgetown of waiver on providing proper notice concerning what sort of they have.
It's recreational.
Recreational marijuana. On recreational marijuana.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the report on the municipal vulnerability program grant, it's local, I think, just I don't know.
Yes, we had a meeting last week. So this is, this is another program through the state, we received $15,000 for consulting services from a municipal vulnerability provider. About 200, 200 some odd, I think 238 people went through their training and certification program. And so now that that's done, we can choose a provider, and we actually met with Ellie Baker from Horst Witten last week, Tracy, John O'Connell, Krista, and I, and feel that she would be an excellent choice.
As an individual, or as for?
As a firm.
As a firm?
She would be the point person, but she would draw on her firm resources.
It seems spelled H-O-R-S-L-E-Y.
What kind of vulnerabilities?
So it's, it's basically hazard, any kind of hazards, like storm hazards, it's going to be, we're in a good position, because this will be sort of using the Great Marsh Adaptation Plan as its base, but that really focused on coastal vulnerabilities, storm surge, and all of that. And so what we're hoping is that this can really, and it was wonderful, but it could all take so much into its scope, so we're hoping that this will really get, be an opportunity for us to look at additional vulnerabilities, maybe some second tier vulnerabilities, look at more inland things, other kinds of hazards.
So when you say "we," who's doing the work on this?
So, we've discussed, we had a, that team was put together when we did our Hazard Mediation Plan update, which included Doug, me, Sam, Chief Riley.
Chief Riley, right.
Fire chief. And then, and so, that group as well as.
Good.
As well as John O'Connell, as a core group. And then we'll be looking for about 30 people to participate in the workshop at some point.
Good. Okay. Why don't we wait on the liaison records until, you guys ready? Mike?
We seem to plug in and...
Yeah, okay.
Does need to set up?
Why does it set up?
And the Great Marsh Symposium, just.
Right, it's going to be, when?
November 9th. At movements, much future, it's going to be great, perhaps, too. And, so the Great Marsh, that's where they'll be, calling up the Great Marsh Adaptation.
So that could, anybody who can make it to that, it says like 8:00 in the morning or 9:00?
It starts...
So it's one more, if I went to the one a year ago, Martha is going to be the speaker.
And I will go.
So I think we have to go.
Just a panelist.
A panelist.
I will be there.
That's a speaker.
Do I see you about signing up for?
Actually, through the website, if you go to.
Just go to what?
It's in the app, there you go. It's $15 until we're 20, and if you're not, it's $20.
Can I catch you back? I'm going to catch you back.
It's there.
So confident is she, here it is, here it is, here. Okay. So, who's setting up is Angela Vincent and Mike Parkett. And to those of you who were here before, oh, you can do a summary of everything, right, Angela, Mike? You're going to do, I don't have to do a summary of wherever we've been with this. You'll do that?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
And so this is, but this is the second time we've met with them as a group. And they, as I said, to start the meeting off, they've made progress in writing a document and coming up with some preliminary thoughts about what our issues are, and so we're here to listen to where they are in the process. Just go to what?
It's in the app that I gave out. It's $15 until we're 20 and a half, you know, it's $20.
Can I catch your back? I'm gonna catch your back.
It's.
So confident is she. Here it is. Here it is. Okay. So who's setting up is Angela Vincent and Mike Parkett. And for those of you who were here before, you can do a summary of everything, right? Angela, Mike? You're gonna do, I don't have to do a summary of wherever you've been with this. You'll do that?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
And so this is, but this is the second time we've met with them as a group. And they, as I said, to start the meeting off, they've made progress in writing a document and coming up with some preliminary thoughts about what our issues are. And so we're here to listen to where they are in the process. Oh, good. There you go.
So, is there a paper?
Yeah. That looks fine.
Okay, we can just, just pour a chair over or.
I can pour a chair over, yeah.
Okay, you sure?
Yeah, okay.
We set?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know how many of you were here last night.
Two, that I know of. Maybe three.
Okay.
Right there.
I don't know if we need to explain ourselves, but for those who don't know, we're the Merrimack Valley Plan Commission, established in 1959. We serve the 15 towns from Lawrence and Andover, all the way up the river to Newbury, Fort and Salisbury and Newbury and Rowley and Georgetown, West Newbury and all the towns in between. Our three main programs are transportation, community economic development and city planning, and environmental and GIS work. What we have been doing for the last seven months or so is developing a regional housing plan for Merrimack Valley that identifies strategies for developing housing in the region. And what you will gather this is a, is a, is a, not only a regional plan, but a housing production plan for all of, all the different communities that are participating in this, in this, in this project. Of project accomplishments to date, we have had 14 community workshops. We have engaged over 300 people in the process. We have compiled 43 data sets for all 15 communities. Many, many sources have been used and consulted. And we have completed needs assessment in 13 communities. And the needs assessment is the meat of the, of the housing production plan. We've also been using Co-Organize. It's a, it's a media tool whereby people who don't want to come out to public carings such as this can use their computer, their laptops, their, their mobile devices, and they can, they can talk to us through that. They can give us their input on what's happening in their community, what they think the needs are for housing in their community, what they like, what they don't like, like, and such. And you can see, we've had 205 comments, and you can see how it increased over, over the summer months. But it's been a, it's been a wonderful tool to use, because as, as I said, a lot of people don't like to come to these kinds of meetings. It's, you probably know yourselves, because you conduct public carings all the time.
So how do you reach them? How do, how do they know to comment?
They can, well, we attend public carings, I guess.
Yeah.
I, public meetings, we always talk about Co-Organize. We have, we have business cards that we hand out.
So they just took on to that.
They, they go on, yeah, exactly.
We actually also have placards, and I don't know where the one for Newbury is, but it's almost like a political sign that says, it asks us a question and says, hey there, you know, what do you think the biggest needs for housing are in Newbury? It's specific to Newbury, and then it says, text your idea to this. So about half of our participants are actually engaging that way. Not necessarily in Newbury specifically, but on the whole, throughout the region, every community has a specific sign. And so we've been engaging in that way, as well as asking our partners to do the same, and then people who come to our Facebook page and don't come to a meeting. So we're definitely using more media related, but those signs have been really fun.
Yeah, it's a great tool. We tell all our cities and towns, they tell their constituents and their people, so it's been, it's been a wonderful deal.
Have you put it up on any town websites?
Yes, some of the town websites have it up, yeah.
Okay.
I talked to Susan.
But I said, there's been, there's been over 1,100 visits by 585. Well, it says unique people, but people. I don't know how unique they are. Just average citizens, that's all they are. For interestingness. Here's some of the comments, more starter, single home, single-family homes are needed. The only new construction I see around town are very large, expensive colonials or condos. We need something in between for growing up families. And I was having a conversation out in the hallway with this, this young gentleman over here, who says he was a city planner for, for 30 years in Walden. So he's very attuned to the, to the subject matter, and we were talking too, that so many young families can't afford to, to move into this area, or a good part of the state of Massachusetts in general. More other comments, West Newbury's creating affordable housing, still inclusion area zoning. Growing needs elderly and step-down housing for older folks selling their homes. We've heard a lot of comments about, about elderly people in large, five-bedroom, five-bath homes that may not want to stay there. They would like to stay in the community they're in now, whether it's West Newbury or Newbury or Foxford, but they, they want a two-bedroom, two-bath home on a very small lot. And they, they went up building those, they're very hard to find, but they, they don't want to, they don't want to stay in those larger homes, so they need to step down. Community housing for special needs population and those with disabilities. Angie will talk more about that later in her presentation. An idea we're doing, we need affordable housing for people over 55. Again, senior housing, not $300,000 homes. Senior population is increasing, which I'm sure you all know that, and I will show you some data to prove that. How can we create more affordable homeownership opportunities in the Merrimack Valley? I, that's, that's, you know, that's, that's one of the keys. How can we, this is very high cost of living area, high cost of living state, not only just housing, but all across the board, but housing in particular. How do, how do we create more affordable housing where our kids can, can come back to Massachusetts and live?
And before you change slides, so the point of this one was that we actually are engaging in a different way. We're switching from needs, which is what we are going to talk about very briefly today, to solutions, which is the reason why we're having this meeting tonight. So I would highly encourage, if you have taken a look at it, or if you haven't yet, there are five different themes that I'll, that I'll throw out at the end for us to begin our, our strategies discussion, that we are using as, as our background for this, as our platform. So very, very different take on than our needs discussion.
You may have seen the board, if you've been to any of the, the different meetings we had. I think Karen and I brought this last night we came, and we asked people to put, put a little dot on the house that they, they, they like, the house that they, they think more housing should be built. There wasn't any real specific categories, just what, what, what do you like and what do you think we need more of? And the top bunk unit was this large apartment complex, which happens to be in Andover. Second one was this single-family home, I believe it's in West Newbury. Right in the corner, bachelor room. And this is, and this was also in second place. Hyper second place is this farmhouse, which is on 113 West Newbury. I understand that farmhouse is a sale.
Yeah.
It's about like 15 acres of land.
Yeah.
And number three was this hanging house, which, you know, do they like the house or do they like the show? But regardless, this, this, this is a great alternative to housing, and that's why this show was so popular, because a lot of people like this. But how many towns and cities in Massachusetts actually have zoning that allows this to be built?
Not many.
If any.
Lawrence is trying in our region to do it. They have.
So the next steps, hold a second community workshop, that's why we're here tonight. This is the second time we've been out here. We're gonna continue with the Co-Organized polls, develop regional and local goals and strategies, and that's what we want to talk to you about. What are some of your goals? And, and develop strategies for those goals. And then we will finally finish writing a plan and bring it back to you for adoption. It has to be adopted by the planning board and, and your board of select.
And then it goes to the ACV for better.
Then I'm gonna turn it over to Angie, and she's gonna talk about housing needs and some other things.
Thanks, Max.
Now, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Do you have any questions for me?
All right, so as a.
Just one other. Were you satisfied with the amount of feedback you got in Co-Organize?
I was, but I'm not a media guru, so to speak. I, I'm from the old school where we, we didn't have that available to us. Angie can probably tell you, she probably used it more than I have in her, her past jobs, and how, how we compare.
I, I haven't actually used it in my past jobs. It was a relatively new tool for me, but I've used similar tools. And this is the first regional project that they've engaged in. They usually use this for more localized, I mean, really hyper-localized, so, you know, mill districts or neighborhoods or even a street. So this is a very large-scale project for them. It started pretty slow, but I feel like after we got some momentum, we were able to build that momentum and keep up on it. One of the things I wanted to highlight, if we could go back to this slide, was that in addition to these folks actually mentioning these, they can actually double engage, so they, they won't, and I've been, I always support it too. So when, when there's someone that gives feedback, I, you know, I make sure I go in there and either thank them or ask them a question to follow up, and then it becomes a conversation. So it's not a one-way street. I think that's the piece that we really wanted to get from this was, so let's go further with it, or let's see, you know, people are actually reading it. So I know that, that seems like, that's actually right at the beginning of when we launched this tool too, so five supporters. So it means other people are going back to review the other responses. So that's what gave me encouragement. I think that the engagement was quality over quantity in this case. The best thing about this tool, and so hopefully you'll follow us with our next project, which is our comprehensive economic development strategy, we're going to transition directly into that, because we all know that jobs and homes go kind of hand in hand. And so we're excited that there'll already be a base for us to begin using this, and we are actually thinking about using it for our transportation planning too. So that base is gonna be really good for us, and we'll keep building on that through, and some people, maybe people may fall off if they're not interested in that, but overall, I think, you know, there are some communities that unfortunately didn't, it didn't take off as well. Actually Georgetown didn't use it at all, and neither did Merrimack, because they have their own plans. But the other communities, you know, some of it's been light, some of it's been really heavy. So it's really gonna depend on, you know, the style and the, you know, the, the grab that it has for people.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Sorry, that was a long-winded answer, but it's.
It's okay.
Yeah, I needed to qualify it. There was some pieces to it. So thank you for the question, though, that's really important. So I want to begin again with our sources, because I think this is really important, that they come from a variety of different places, and that we don't put all of our eggs in the census basket, especially the 2011 to 2015 survey. What we've been trying to do with this is focus more on percentages instead of the exact numbers. So you'll see with our indicators of housing need, which was laid out and unveiled at our regional open house, we're trying to use more numbers and quantitative things, so one in number of people, like one in five, or X percentage, or ranking, instead of it being exact numbers, because people focus so much on those. And, you know, as we know, and as you may see in some of these slides, that we actually refer to this data set as estimates. So I do want to make, I want to put that up there as kind of the caveat for these numbers, is not to focus too much on, oh, there were only 40, 40 units that we needed, or whatever it might be. So, and then the rest of these were used for a variety of sources, from our subsidized housing inventory to Mass Department of Transportation, which we use for our population projections. So without further ado, I'm going to get into the data. We're gonna do a very short case on the data needs, and then I'm gonna switch gears and we're gonna start talking about strategies. So we're gonna bring out a great map, and we're gonna start circling places, and I'll describe that when we start, but I just wanted to mention that. So household growth, we have about, about, about six communities, seven communities that aren't, they're about a little bit below where the region is as far as growth. So you're about in the middle, you're almost exactly in the middle for us. However, that population growth, as we talked about the last time, is projected to decrease pretty significantly, so I think it ended up being a little over, over 2%. Again, projections, and these are based on estimates from, and I just actually learned this, I didn't realize it was a complete data set, between 2005 and 2010. So as we know, that was a decline in, in our history, and it was a recession, so it may be that that's not a trend we want to follow, but it is something to consider. And it does translate into our household size and as well, as well as the characteristics. So the big highlights for Newbury that came out of this most recent needs assessment were a big decline in households with individuals under 18, so with children under 18 in the homes. And that decline could, well, should be looked at pretty seriously, because as I said, the percentages are things we should probably pay attention, we don't pay attention too much to the numbers. But a decline like that is really going to affect what our household composition's gonna look like, what types of housing we need in the future, and the size of the house that we need. As we have been seeing from comments in Co-Organize, people want to step down, people want smaller homes, starter homes. And not surprisingly, that single-person households are actually going up. So that actually translates into these big numbers. So you're seeing the average household size go down and the family size go down, just sparsely here, but enough that it makes a difference. And again, that translates into how do we project what we need in the future. Although Newbury's population is projected to go down, it's still something to think about when we do build new homes. Let's focus on the ones that we really need based on this information.
And that, that, that figure with the households with people under, under the age of 18, that ties very closely with what Angie had talked about, the, the sense of the economic development plan we're gonna be writing in, in the coming year. And if, if we're losing all those people under the age of 18, if they're leaving and not coming back, and we have this huge population of baby boomers that is retiring, who's there to take those jobs when all the baby boomers retire? Which we see happening now. I, I talk to companies and businesses a lot, and they're scared to death that they won't be able to find people to work.
So are you, do you do a breakout of the population to show the population cohorts that are increasing and decreasing?
Yes, there's, I believe it's in the needs assessment.
But if it's in there somewhere, I mean, you're gonna go over here, though.
I'm not.
No?
No.
So, so let me bring up the concern.
It wasn't, they weren't significant numbers enough, so I only tried to pick the things tonight that we could really dig into, so.
So the concerns that we have had, when we went, in our community facilities thing, I think it was, where we looked at trade and their projections for the future.
Sure.
And they are dismal.
Yeah.
That the population of students at the Newbury Elementary School, I don't want to say it, but it's 30% decline over the next 15 years, something like that.
Yeah.
And at the high school, a similar number.
Yeah.
And, and it, it's, it's not healthy for a community to lose those young children, because what, what that correlates to is you're losing those parents of the children as well.
Exactly. I'm glad to see that connection.
Because, you know, and so it's, it's a major issue. At the same time, we're projecting an increase in those over 65, of over 1,000 in the next 15 years of what we have today.
You're actually changing the ratio so large that almost, it ends up being around 42% by 2035.
It's a frightening number.
It's the biggest one in our region. That is the.
As you see, John, it's.
Most shocking one.
It, it's not healthy for a community.
It's not.
And, and that we have a problem, and I don't think it's, I don't say that the town has created it, it's just a problem we have.
Yes, yeah.
Well, this is, this is a regional problem.
Yes.
And we've talked about this before, because we have business in New Hampshire, and New Hampshire's one of the states that is growing old, is septic fast in the country.
Yes.
And a lot of that is because of the fact that, you know, our planning was a lot shorter term, and it certainly was up there, where they, a lot of towns push 50-plus housing as it's not gonna cost us much.
Right.
And now they're paying the piper because they don't have the young people coming up into the industry.
Right.
It's hard to find people, it's hard to, to fill jobs, the unemployment rate is going down, and the population of people who are eligible to work is going down.
Going down.
And, and exactly as you said, you know, people who are retiring, we're holding on to them.
Yeah.
You don't want them retired. You've got a couple of good years left.
Can I just add, there's a whole nother element that's changed that is that not everybody goes to work.
Right.
A lot of people work at home, and so they're, they don't necessarily need to live near where they work.
That's true.
And so, again, there's no incentive for people to move in here and for people to move out of here.
Yep, good point. Yeah, and at some point, hopefully, the, hopefully this next census will capture that a lot better than previous censuses.
You know, this is almost like a disease. Maine has had this problem for eons, but it kind of progressed.
People moving out.
And it's kind of progressed.
Did you say Maine?
Maine.
Maine, it's a Maine.
I said Maine for a second.
It's a Maine. It's old, I have been old for ages and it's kind of progressed.
Yep, yeah.
Well, the town of Rockport put an ad in the Globe looking for young families.
Is that right?
Wow, that's an interesting approach.
Move to Rockport, we have affordable housing and great schools.
I hope it works for them.
But one stat I did want to say is that the adults twenty to thirty-five and thirty-five to sixty-four were definitely projected to go down. So as you can see here, so you can look at this one and the other one.
Yeah, the only gain here are the people over thirty, over sixty-five.
Yes, those are, those are big, big changes that those, that population, especially twenty to thirty-four. Those are the folks that need the starter homes, that want to start a family and, well, at least traditionally. I know they are starting a little later in life now, but traditionally, those people are coming back from college and wanting to do their thing. So big trends, big trend shaker, I should say. So switching gears into owner versus renter because this is probably not a new stat, although oddly enough in your master plan chapter, it was, it was a little lower. It was like twenty-three percent renter, or no, maybe it was lower, seventeen percent. So you guys went up in rental, that's good. The data was two thousand.
Because the data was older.
Yeah, it was older, two thousand seven to two thousand ten, I think it was, or something like that. So, but I thought that was an interesting improvement over this data set. So you're creeping up with some rentals. But it is still lower than not just the Essex County and Massachusetts, but also for our region.
That's not a fair comparison though because Newbury is much more rural and Essex County in general and Massachusetts in general, although Western Mass obviously is quite different. But it's not a fair comparison.
Well, even with our region, it was still, which there are quite a few rural communities in our region, it was still a little, it was almost exactly the same. We're actually at our Essex County.
I can't imagine a town more rural than Newbury, to be honest.
Oxford.
Oxford.
I don't think so.
And Raleigh is pretty, has some pretty rural areas.
I would say Oxford.
What's that?
But Georgetown is not all rural. Growth lines, though, but anyway.
So the median income by eight householders was a surprise as well. So you may know from our last conversations, the area median income is around ninety-one thousand. Sorry, I'm going to move this so I can move back a little more. And that, you know, the concentration of the higher-income folks are in the forty-five to sixty-four category, a close second in the twenty-five to forty-four-year-olds. And these are all rain comparisons. So the orange is the Merrimack Valley, the gray is Essex County and Massachusetts has been green and yellow. So you see again, not surprisingly, that sixty-five and older are starting to shrink a little bit. But it is still important to remember because as Mike said, those folks are wanting to step down and unfortunately, there may not be homes affordable in the ranges that they need. Because right now in Newbury, the single-family home is, on average, the median sales price via the Warren Group, which I should have added them to our sources, but this is a very qualified source. It's one that many people use and you have to pay for, which is a really nice feature because we know that they're really doing their work. But based in August, four hundred and thirty thousand, which was interesting to do the comparison of condos and we didn't have this data before, but it's actually higher. And it has been getting higher since two thousand and three.
Cold Wilf's farm, yeah, right.
So it's almost flipping on its, on its, on its head. I have not seen this anywhere else in our region yet.
Well, we don't have a lot of condos and one we have is kind of expensive.
Right, so it's the supply and the demand thing again.
So I think that, yeah, the sample size is probably small. But you see here where the peak of the condo market was in two thousand and six and seven and the prices haven't returned to that level. And even in single-family homes, it really hasn't quite returned to the level it was at the peak in two thousand and six.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Yeah, no, I haven't, no, it's, it's, you know, that's the, it's a hundred thousand dollar category, but still, it's, when we see the numbers in person and in the needs assessment, it's actually done by numbers. So you can see the chart and you can see the individual numbers. It does what people want to geek out on, which I know people do, so it's important to see all the numbers as well. And then what does that gap look like? So we did some analysis on, you know, the income needed to afford the median sales price. So you saw the four, four, nine, nine thousand, nine hundred thousand. So you would need to make about a hundred and ten thousand in order to afford that average sales price right now for a home, not a condo, we're just doing the homes. But the median household income, as we just discussed, is ninety-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight. And so affordability for that is three hundred and seventy-one. So you can see there's a gap, a pretty big one. What is that, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand of a gap? And actually, we did a chart, we did a comparison in the region and the gaps get larger as we went north in our region, oddly enough. So it's important to remember. And then, you know, on this side, we're seeing the folks that don't make the median income. And so what, you know, considering that we have those folks here in Newbury and in the region in general, we do need to consider what affordable means for them. So they would need to make, even at three hundred and nine thousand, which is about the average for the region, they would need to make seventy-eight thousand, a hundred and fifty, that's a four-person household too in order to afford that.
You're assuming what, twenty percent down payment?
Twenty percent down payment, four point two percent interest in a thirty-year fixed mortgage.
And we were having a conversation out in the hall when you were still meeting that. The realtor said, you know, no one can afford to put twenty percent down anymore. Because if you take a three hundred thousand dollar house, which is an inexpensive house for the most part, you have to put sixty thousand down.
Lord, thanks, allowing you to do five and ten?
Yeah, seven.
Three and a half, right.
Three and a half down?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, it's widely, in fact, we've heard this at some of our workshops that people don't know that.
That's how we had it before.
That's getting to the bad old days.
That's right.
Yeah.
The Njelons, remember that?
That's right.
All right, so we set the stage here and our next step, which is a requirement for your housing plan in order for it to be certifiable by DHCD, is to take a look at your map of the community and we created one for you. But we have some supplements here. And to basically outline the areas, and again, when I say areas, I'm using that very broadly. It doesn't need to be a parcel, it doesn't need to be a neighborhood. It could be a, you know, a street if you want. But DHCD does want to see areas for potential housing growth. What we could put on there, and I encourage you to do that so you can keep track of it, and I know you've got these numbers already, are things that are in the pipeline. Because then that'll probably give you some baseline to move forward. So you can say, well, we already know that X, Y, and Z is being built here. So wouldn't we need something else here? Or, so it kind of gives you some perspective on what we may need. But as we're hearing.
These people all join.
Yeah, oh, I can turn it around, turn it around.
How do you guys do it? So do you want us to just write something down on this?
Yep, so what we encourage you to do is use fun colors for specific use, types of housing. So you could use, or if you want to mark off an area, for instance, last night in Methuen, you know, they made sure that the blue was, you know, if we marked off areas that were blue, it may not have represented wetlands from our map. But if it, you know, just to signify what it should be if you think that we have a need in that area. So senior, multifamily, starter homes, accessory dwelling units. I'm just naming a bunch that I've seen in your master plan, so.
And do you want to do this irrespective of things that you know about soil types?
Yeah, right.
All of that.
You can, that's what I'm saying, yeah. So if we want to do some references and we want to say, well, what about this area? Then we should look at those two for, as a reference to say, well, is that really the starter?
Isn't it that one? Yeah, it's a soil and septic limitations.
And this one's kind of interesting for comparison. This is housing.
Okay, so this is, this is saying, so what is, is anyone going to say?
Only the green and probably the moderate is maybe.
Maybe buildable.
Yeah. Because it gets up to severe, 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 severe.
It leaves most of the town.
The two darker greens. And yes, that's an issue.
That's where you put all those soil arrays, no, no.
And that's an issue and that, that, I mean, that certainly doesn't limit what you can do.
And you have another issue and that is they're trying to protect the farmland and all that and a lot of that green is farmland.
Yeah, the green, a lot of the green on that, that map is protected open space, so.
And we also have a fair amount of flood plain and wetlands. If you start looking at climate change and storm surge.
Yep, and that was in your master plan too, was to protect the populations that are there.
So most of the land really is up and down Route one A. And you're right, that's a scenic highway.
Yeah, that too.
Right?
Yeah.
And two or three farms.
And a lot of that's farmland, yeah.
And slowly getting increased demand to build down it.
Yeah, if the farmland were to change hands, the town, if it's in sixty-one A, the town has the right of first.
Well, we've got, we've got one that's.
Town doesn't do that.
Yeah, they're not going to do it.
Most towns don't have, don't have money.
But we've got one that's now in construction and then another one that's coming in soon. Where is that one?
Is that?
Where's Coleman? Where's Coleman? Another one's coming in there at sixty-one A.
Okay, so Martha, do you want to write on the ones that are?
On poor soils, that's interesting.
Whatever they want.
You know, that's the thing about the soil. There's lots of times there are areas within these poor soil lands where it was.
Unless you want us to take your.
Just the ones that, Martha, that we know about.
Right, so looking, so Coleman, Coleman Road one is right in, which I have hard goes, but it's right in.
And what's Coleman Road, what kind of development?
They would be doing OSRD there, probably twenty-four, twenty-six units.
Okay, do you want to write that?
That's what we're talking about.
Coleman and then.
Over sixty-five, fifty-five.
And to be honest, I'm not in favor of that. I'm really honest.
So we're going to have to talk to them about that.
Right.
So I'm going to put down plus fifty-five, that's what they're talking about.
Yeah, that's great.
And if you get the one possibility just south of Pearson Drive there.
Well, it's got two of them, we got two of them.
That's right, right.
Unfortunately. We've got one on that side.
Right, well, that's the forty B, so this one, this one, there's also OSRD.
Fourteen units?
We're looking at fourteen units. Do you want to know where he is?
Yeah, if you have it, that's.
And I heard that the perp is okay there.
We can always follow up if we don't have it.
Oh, come, come.
We do have a forty B.
I haven't, you know, checked the investigation.
What its fate will be. Do you want me to know that?
Sure.
It's, I mean, it's not a place that we would desire housing, I don't think.
No, somebody, somebody could put some other housing back there.
Would you want that? I'm talking about any housing.
Any housing.
We, we.
It's possible.
We've got, you know, we've got the cul-de-sac, we've got potential water issues. So I'm not sure how it designated as a place that we would like to do housing.
Yeah, because this will be in your final plan, so anything that you're not necessarily.
That's a good idea, keep that.
Yeah.
But one, one place that I think we should talk about would be.
The B L.
Oh, so that's your priority development area, which was officially designated by the state.
What do you think of Fred?
I think it's great.
I mean, why not?
That's the, that's the point of the priority development areas and the communities is to focus, not always mixed use, but in your case it is.
Right.
Yeah, that would be great to demonstrate.
Yeah.
That would go very well with the state.
So how do you do that? I don't want to say that all of it, because some of it, how come?
Little river project.
Oh, is this?
Identified development areas.
Yeah.
Why is it not signed?
That's not identified as a priority development area, just.
Oh, by, just by you?
Not for the state, we went through that process for the priority.
Because this is, because we do have one, two, three new, like, industrial uses on this side.
Oh, interesting. Yeah.
And not much on this side at all.
That was done in two thousand and nine, John, so it's possible that the area.
So maybe we can update that and show some stuff that's coming up.
But I would.
I would do that.
Is that on the pollings?
I would do that. Yeah.
Now, if you would turn this down to the recreational thing, you'd have some possibilities in there, the golf course.
Right, and they didn't get perks there, they got three perks up there.
There's three perks. There might be six houses, might be nine houses. I don't know.
They're going, get your golf clubs out.
And so that could be mixed use there, right?
If the neighbors sue, it'll be two years.
Oh, no, oh, you won't go.
It'd be all right.
It could take a while.
What about anything over in the other priority development area, which is. Yeah, right, where we are, right? Thank you, pleasure. I was like, oh, let's try it, I think I see, can't wait. And the highway.
I mean, we have something over on Rogers Lane.
Nothing going on down there.
Five acres.
Five acres. Yeah, I mean, we expanded our commercial highway district in here a few years ago.
Yep, but we've talked about a mix there, master plan-wise.
Right.
Yeah, why not? Sure, that'd be a challenge to.
Yeah, well, well, forgetting the realities of the situation.
That's right, we can do that.
But it's got, it's got water.
Oh, great.
Down near Fred's house.
Yeah, any open possibility down there. There always is, right? A lot there on that side of the river.
No.
The old course used to be.
And I was talking with so many of them, so many of these places have saw.
This is already, really? This is actually septic for Triton. And one of the things that we talked about was if there was a possibility, and this is one of the things developing, of having a sewage treatment, wastewater treatment system, then you can, you can start to reuse land that was used for septic home.
Yeah.
And just one of the things, I've been going to different towns and looking at different sites to see what it takes. We're right now trying to get some of the people who do this to, to talk about estimates of what you need for land, what we need for population, what makes sense to put that kind of stuff forward because that unlocks a tremendous amount of property. And, you know, when I look at it, I look at it from the point of view of, this is very valuable real estate. If you can put more homes on less real estate, you can bring the level of cost down. And, you know, when we look at this, we look at School Street, for instance. And that was all starter homes. They, when they went in, they were all the same size. They were mirror images of each other. People took them, they started there, they added stuff to them over the period of time. But now it's gotten so expensive, we don't have that available. And the land was cheaper.
True.
And we got twenty-five acres when we got it for a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Okay? And so, so, but this is, this is, this is the realization that we have to work with, I think. And looking at the fact that we are infrastructure poor rules out keeping older people in smaller homes and younger people in smaller homes coming in. And so.
We have to solve that if we're going to solve our two problems.
Right. And so I've seen more septic systems than I, or sewer systems, sewer treatment plants than I've seen in a while. And the people are really good about it. But I've got, for working, trying to get a firm to give us some more information so I can come back to you and say, this is what makes sense and this is how it goes in other places.
I'm not going to have a lot of information on that.
They have some, but they're.
They're septic, isn't it?
No.
No. And what is a wastewater treatment?
It's a wastewater treatments facility, similar to one that we, I went and visited in Ipswich. I actually visited two in Ipswich. The small one, which is Turner Hill, which is.
Turner, Turner Hill?
Yeah.
It's Turner Hill?
Yeah, Turner Hill. They have a system that works very well, but, you know, limited size. And so the cost per household goes up. Then I went to the municipal system, which is big enough to take care of Ipswich and Route, if I ever wanted to go into it. Yeah. And, and that one is a very big system. But this is the kind of stuff that I'm looking at and looking at the firms that can give us an idea of what is really viable for town to size.
That's a great, that's a great strategy which you should consider putting in your plan.
Well, we're going to. Well, we're gonna.
To investigate.
How long do you think that might take to get that information?
I'm hoping to get, um, we're trying to meet with them before meeting on first.
What we have in the plan now, in the implementation thing on Land Use, it says investigate these things as part of an action plan. So in honesty, you don't have to have it resolved if you wanna just say it's part of a work item that we will have once we adopt the master plan. Like to have more. The extent to which you can have more is great, but it's, yeah, 'cause I think that, as listening to you, it's a lot more detailed than we would typically have in the plan, not that we can't.
And you have.
But I mean, you really is the process is trying to figure out how do we get stuff built.
You have it in your housing charter too.
Yeah.
So what about infill? There was some discussion in the housing charter about that as well, or repurposing buildings.
They probably will shoot me at the first church. But behind the first church are all these gardens they have there, they're all community gardens. But, you know, that church is very iffy in financial ability to make that, so. And the area behind that would be a great area for affordable housing.
Which church do you belong to then? You certainly don't belong to the first church.
I don't belong to a church, my, that's my family's church, yeah. On High Road, almost in the Newbury Fluke.
Yeah, it's, it's the main, it was the first church, I mean.
Yeah, it's a, it's kind of a center there, right? Is there, there are field, fields and?
Not, well.
It's, it's.
It's part of the old town center, I guess.
It's more like the Evergreen, which is right upon the.
There's two or three homes that date to the sixteen hundreds that are around it.
Cool.
That is cool.
Is that on the side?
Yes, there are any.
That, and. Oh, the whole area around here, the whole area around here could be.
You have a burying ground too.
If, if you look at, you know, wanting to be close to ninety-five, put all of this stuff in between, all down in here, there's a whole area. Long Elm Street, this is all high, high land, down Coleman, between Coleman Road and, and there. We walked, there's actually running paths to go back there, and there really, this is all my problem.
That's where Governor, that's where Governor's just built their two houses, isn't it?
Yes.
Just in the joint, yeah, on old road.
But from this part forward, down here, it's not Dummer.
It's not Dummer's?
No, there's houses in the front, and nothing in the back, I guess that's what you're saying.
Close to schools, it looks like.
And, and the problem is, this, this is all G, it doesn't.
Yeah.
So that's where, that's where the package system would, would make sense.
Would it make sense, though, are you suggesting maybe we should, where Triton septic system is now?
Yeah.
Look at that area, and also in from here, there's a big, fairly big parcel there, which at some point could be divided, maybe.
Yes, it is.
So maybe, maybe all of this.
Yeah. So when you say, we're looking at the Triton septic system, that, you would make that found, make them have a, a, a mechanical system?
Have a different system, yeah.
On their campus?
They could have it on their campus, because it's much like what, what Dummer has on their, Governor's has on their campus.
Sorry.
It's G, okay. And, uh, and that's a, that's a package system that dumps into the Mill River.
Yep. Heavily monitored too, so housework pretty well.
Yeah, it does, it does, it works well.
So that one would be, what types of housing? Um, starter homes or?
I mean, it, yeah.
Or, you know, small cottage style.
Yeah, underwater land, yeah.
I think anywhere in town, we could try to get some starter housing built in, it'd be nice.
So how do you incentivize the developer to do that?
That's a good question, that is a good question.
And the seller to, to not go to the top.
Right, that, that's the key.
Right.
So that the land price is partially subsidized and costs of the heaven.
Nobody has an answer.
Incentives, tax incentives to the developer, um, you know, in the form of, or, or to the owner, but for that matter, we've been hearing, you know, giving a partial tax write-off, basically, for someone who opens up their home to a more affordable unit.
I don't, I don't think this town would do that.
Is there any, uh, is there any land that town owns that they'd be willing to sell to a developer for next to nothing? As long as he builds a hundred units of starter homes?
I, I.
I think they sold it all. I think they sold it, obviously.
Did they sell?
Well, on Island, we sold it.
Yeah.
And it didn't go for affordable housing.
You're right, you know, that, that would be repurposing.
Yeah.
The biggest crime here is for these people that don't know that are new in, uh, in Merrimack Valley Planning Council. Newbury at one time had lots of affordable housing. All of Palm Island was affordable housing, I mean, it was cheap.
Yeah.
And that is gone by the boards.
In the seventies when I went down to the beach.
That's the main reason I've heard this, but I think.
Well, that, and then the flood zones changed, so now a lot of those homes have to carry flood insurance, and so the people that are at the north, they can't afford flood insurance.
Right, you buy, you buy three small houses and tear them down and build one big one.
That's re-purposed?
And it is the part of the town that has water.
And that is the part of the town that has.
That's why we're bringing sick homes up.
Um, that we were not interested in that, or it wasn't a good idea, but wouldn't that create, um, homes for your first time buyers to go into?
What, what, I'm sorry, what's the first part of your?
Over here.
Oh, you know, over here?
Coleman, Coleman.
Oh, Coleman?
If that turned into a fifty-five, people would be.
We haven't had that conversation with the developer yet.
Oh, I thought you said you were.
I would like, I, they presented.
Oh, he's looking at doing, yeah, housing for people who are fifty-five and over, so.
So they sell their home, and the young family moves into it, and they move up.
If, if they, if they were, if they were buying here, but they're coming in from out of town.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that. What percentage of, uh?
Colby Farms.
Colby Farm, uh, are Newbury people? I think there's only one, one, right?
I know a few, I know a few.
Very, very low.
Yeah. I mean, my, my problem with the old fifty-five is the Colby Farms folks also don't get engaged in the community. Don't come to community meetings, they don't come to town meeting.
They, they, they are from somewhere around.
I'm just trying to tell you.
Yeah.
That's not good. It, it further cuts out at the fabric of the community. And we embraced it.
So, Martha, what's the cross hatch? The hatch is.
Yeah, we know that, right?
You, you and many other towns have raised over fifty-five housing, and because the argument was, we don't wanna go back to schools.
Oh, and it's.
And now it seems to losing population by.
There's the impact. But it's not an easy argument, it's town meeting, right?
And there could be, this is, this is already one.
Yeah.
Right, this is, this is pretty wet, a lot of it's pretty wet, I mean, we could circle this whole thing in the hope that something could be.
Well, again, the whole, and then on this task force since, I don't know how long, when we looked at all of this back when we had an economic development task force, and we said, sure, we can do that, all we need is water and sewer. Okay? And, and at the time, we looked at it and laughed, but that's really one of the keys to unlocking a tremendous amount of what is tied up in town. Because you look at the soils map and say, well, not going in with anything unless we do a better job and can better utilize some of the areas in the town.
So are you thinking one sewage treatment or multiple ones?
Okay, I'm, I'm still in the process of looking at things like that, I, I quite frankly have not educated enough to, to tell you that. We've looked at small packages where people have, the one, Turner Bend, for instance, is a just under a million gallon per day package.
How many units does that save?
And, and it's, uh, I, I don't remember how many, but they're only running one-third capacity.
Okay.
Okay, so they put it in for the eventuality of a lot more homes. So they're running at one-third.
But they've got a lot of homes there, a lot of condos.
The people that are living in there aren't over fifty-five with no children and not.
Oh, is it, it's a complete fifty-five home?
So.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. So there's not as much usage, not some laundry, not for show.
Right, that's right, right, right.
You know, 'cause we went.
I'm just gonna say, half, half the year that's probably living somewhere around.
Yeah, they're going to Florida.
But it's, it's, it's a reuse of that resource, because it goes, they, they actually go into a leach field. But it's so clean, when it goes into the leach field, it goes back into the aquifer, comes back.
Yeah. Yeah.
Not an issue, in fact, you're going to one more level of treatment, and then they can use it for irrigating the golf course there. So just to get, put it in the golf course.
Marshall, is there some way you could get data that would say, this is the cost of a unit that does X amount of.
That's what we're.
Water and serves X amount of dwellings. That would tell us a lot. And they differentiate this way. And, um, and then that would be so helpful.
Yes.
You may wanna write that on the map, Martha, that without solving the septic issue, uh, the areas that have been circled, the problems, the only ones with potential for growth.
Oh, I think that's true.
This is Martin Brown's up here. But, yeah, but if that's, and we could look at, we could circle this, I think we could probably come out on this one.
Sure. But I don't think you should go on the other side of this.
No, I don't think there's anything.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
There, milling property in here, maybe.
Yeah, but I, I think you're, you're better doing that.
So it's a hundred and ten gallons per bedroom, is how they, they begin, per day?
But, yeah, better, 'cause over fifty-five, they get substantially benefit.
Yeah, potentially, but thirty-three thousand dollars per bedroom, so that, so a hundred and ten gallons.
I think it goes up to like one fifty or one sixty, that's an over fifty-five.
Okay.
Thirty-three thousand of the cost of the facility, per bedroom? What's the thirty-three per bedroom?
Uh, thirty-three thousand dollars per bedroom, so that's per, not just, not just the unit itself, or the housing unit itself, it's per bedroom. So if, he's seen him go up to a hundred thousand dollars for a three-bedroom.
So it's expensive.
It is expensive, there's, there's no doubt. What it does is it scales. Because, and, and this is some of the data that I'm looking for, which is how does it scale? The small one, Turner Hill, is a, went in there at a premium because it's serving a small community. And so, in looking at the alternative of putting in a septic system, which is for a three-bedroom, that, plus all of the other stuff that goes with it, you gotta compete.
Does the state have any money for the, potentially, do you think, for these kinds of systems or for small municipal systems?
When I've talked to people so far, what they said is, first you get the system designed and see what you're trying to do, and then you go to the state for a grant. They had been paying for half the systems anyway, really.
And is that just for housing, or do they wanna see a mix?
For whatever you have, you know, if you have housing, if you can then have commerce available.
What's the state agency that does that, H C, H C D C?
I would think it would either be E O H E D or, uh, the Office of, uh, Executive.
J, J A S.
Yeah, J A S and E O H E D, or E O E A. And they may work in a partnership, I would think.
Or A E I O U.
Energy and Environmental Affairs, the E O.
So how do we feel about what we have now? It doesn't have to be a lot, by the way, there's no threshold, 'cause I do wanna make sure we're getting this.
Well, I think, I think we need to say something about Route one A, because I think there's a lot of conflict about one A.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I'm not exactly sure what we should be saying, except for what's been happening is we get small A and Rs and this and that and pork chop blocks, and, and that's about it.
We don't have to connect pork chop block, well, we did away with those.
Yeah.
But the very first one was behind my whole house. But, yeah, I mean, there are areas like.
I mean, you're not gonna deal with, you know, Spencer Pierce Little and stuff like that, I mean, that's there forever.
Yeah, but there are things like the Colby Farm, and I hate to see it developed, but that might be.
Yeah, and I'd hate to see it developed too, I mean, it's part of the character of the town.
So, I mean, I guess that's the, you know, that's the tension.
That is on the end there.
It's a real tension, am I right?
Yep.
Have you ever had someone come in and talk about any of that land, except for the one we had from the guy across from Tender Crop, Arthur's property?
No.
Which he seemed, seemed to stop talking about.
Well, that's, that their situation's changed, and she's starting to figure out what to do.
What about Joe's story?
So when you say you wanna see something about it, John or Martha, who said that?
No, it's just that there's nothing there, and we all, we all have this tension.
That you don't worry, or you wanna be able to.
Well, you're all sensitive to the fact that it's a scenic highway, that it's part of this area that was the old farming parts of town.
A piece of your plan is to identify development considerations, and that's not necessarily a bad thing to add to that piece, is, you know, we wanna keep the scenic highway.
It's all the way around the road there.
Yellow.
You know, if you go in there, it just doesn't need to be on a map or a person.
Maybe that's not a bad idea.
'Cause then it'll, you'll, it'll be still highlighted, it'll be identified, the whole thing, so it's kind of a target.
If we wanted to deal with one A, just say it's a scenic highway, and the historic part of town, where all the farm, all the better farms.
Wetness is this color.
And that we want us, that any new development should be in keeping with the character of the area, and not, not say it should be any kind of, I don't know, is that self-serving? Yeah. Yeah.
And another, another, uh, Joe's story.
You come up, you come up. Right there.
You're right, right on here, and that also happens to be a great site for a well site, so, that's another.
I thought the well site was on the hill.
I think it's behind Joe's.
It's behind?
Yeah, I think it's piled Joe's actually.
Up in here. He comes, yeah, I mean, he comes in right in through around here, I mean, we could.
Anywhere in there is a.
Put it, put it in, I mean, let it scream.
What is the site that you just bubbled before that?
This is a high piece coming down on one A.
It's good land.
It's, it's farmland right now, and I don't know what's going on with it, but it's a nice piece of land.
It's where Eddie's parking his, um.
Yes.
So what would you want to see happen then?
I think that could be a.
Nice thing.
At one point, it was, it was a school there, at one point.
That's a nice housing site.
Was Governor's Academy in relationship to? Oh, I'm, I'm on the run, oh, that's right, that's right.
But that's obviously an important part of Tender Crops operation, as is all those fields in that area, so.
Will tell?
Which, which ones?
Well, I didn't know that.
Not your half yard.
It just do that.
So, you know, I don't know, I mean, if somebody could do, OSRD with starter homes or smaller homes, something that was not. I think the thing is smaller homes, that are, will meet the need of both starter families and investors that don't wanna go in over fifty-fives or.
Good point.
He has to go live with silk cakes and just finish the first floor off.
Right, right, that's how we did mine out, right.
Some possibly.
First floor, and then later on we did the second floor. And then you're out, down the road, you're out of the garage, you're family from all bar run, so.
Exactly what's needed.
The starter homes.
Exactly, and it was discussion, I think, about.
The family group opened the house.
Right.
And even wealthy towns, outside of Austin, Concord and Lexington, uh, you know, fifties and sixties and seventies, you could buy a two, three-bedroom cake for, you know, next to a buck, and then look at the value now. Those don't even wanna build a cake.
I took no one, no one, oh, I know, that's what I know. Uh, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, that, oh, I did, right in here.
And that farm is right here.
Yeah, that's right.
Right there. And the old entrance to the.
Right about, right there, right there.
And all this is just.
No, this is, this is. This is mostly low stuff.
And then there's this farm here. A little sort of farm there. Another across the street. This field is extremely wet.
Right, that's a wet field. As a whole field.
Yeah, but the field has got a lot of proper.
That's developable, that's a chancy thing to say.
Yeah.
What do you think about saying something about the field? I mean, most people want to preserve the barn, for sure.
The farmhouse.
And the farmhouse.
That's, that's very close.
This whole area, we'll scoop right in through here, that whole area is high land.
A lot of us legend.
Yes, that's right.
Well, Martin Burns backs right up.
I know. When someone is building a house up in there right now.
Really?
And blowing holes in the rocks.
Yeah.
But anyways, that's shitty and you have a set, and the wastewater treatment system.
It doesn't matter.
So Martha, do you want to say, just to have chances of, if you have some business out there, we're done there.
Um, we're here.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, it'd be great. Yeah, cause we have all our council plans up there, you. If people would like to bring chairs up here, maybe that would be around one D. Let me think of that. Do you want to come to the table?
What are you doing, woman cares?
Uh, yeah, we're just, we're gonna get comfy around the table. For discussion. All right, so we saw some themes from, that I wanted just to pull out from the data that we discussed and, and there's a lot more data in your needs assessment. So don't think that that's the only thing that we're gonna be counting on. Like I mentioned, I wanted to start the conversation with some things. There's a lot more things to be considered, um, in the data, but these are kind of the highlights. So your population growth, growing a bit smaller or s- lower than the region with a decrease in household size. So again, that could translate and should translate into not just the amount of housing, but the type and the size of the housing. Uh, the composition of the households is changing, less households with children, under eighteen especially, and more single persons, single people. Uh, elderly population is gonna skyrocket or is projected to by twenty thirty-five, so probably about forty-two percent or even, even over forty percent is still a pretty significant amount. It stresses resources and, and services and it's, it would be good to be thoughtful about where that's going to go because they do require more services. So um, lower percentage of renter occupied housing in the region we mentioned, about twenty, we didn't mention some of these numbers, but it is important to remember. Um, even though not many are, are below the median income, we do have about twenty-seven percent of the households who are at or below um, eighty percent of the median income, which is where we start to use numbers for subsidized housing inventory units. So that's what we, the HUD uses for their kind of qualifying higher-end median, medium income or moderate income folks. Um, sixty-two percent of those low incomes, so that twenty-seven percent, sixty-two percent, so over half of them are cost, are cost burdened or house burdened, which means that they're paying over thirty percent of their income on the housing costs, which is considered a burden, it's considered not sustainable. And right now you're about three percent subsidized housing inventory. So as you know, um, the goal for the state is ten percent. We probably heard this a million times, but just in case.
It's okay to hear it again.
Yes, exactly. Um, so what if, we saw some, you know, we know where we want housing or at least we had some ideas that we outlined today. Um, where can, what kind of strategies can we put together that will actually help you achieve those? And you've already started a master plan, I'm gonna go into that in a second, but I wanted you to see what we saw as overall needs. And I thought these were kind of interesting because it really captures some of the essence of our conversations. You know, supporting seniors, that's a really big one, as we mentioned, that's a regional thing. In fact, that's a statewide thing, but definitely a Merrimack Valley thing. In fact, A A R P and their livable communities program is really looking at the valley and starts adopting livable communities and age-friendly community programs so that we can address those in a, in a more sustainable way. Uh, more rental housing, that's across the, the region, we're kind of upside down from the rest of Essex County and Massachusetts in, in general. Uh, a greater diversity of housing and that's not just multifamily, but we didn't talk too much about disabilities because uh, Newbury, again, I wanted to highlight the really important data and it's not because it's not important, it's because it wasn't as much of an issue here in Newbury. So you were probably around, I think it was four percent disability. Um, those are self-reporting numbers all around you, so that, that's not probably capturing everyone, but it is still important because we also have this thing called visitability. So homes that, there might be people living outside of, of Newbury coming in to visit other folks and those homes need to be visitable. So they need to be accessible to all, no matter whether they have a physical disability or maybe there's a mental disability that they have to address. And that, that's a difficult thing to assess, you know, but have, supporting people and, and building households in the future that are accessible, what we call human-based design, is important to consider in these new homes. Um, rehab for older housing stock, that's probably more in our inner cities, but we've been hearing that in other communities as well. And you mentioned the historic district. Um, so there may be some that we can rehab for, uh, repurpose, for instance, maybe breaking them up into other units. Um, and then ownership has been an issue in other parts of the region, it's not as much here, but making those affordable options. So you went through a whole master plan process and you identified six goals and I'm not gonna outline all the strategies, but you have the end chapter in your hands and then hopefully that's the second document it was, that I gave you.
Goals and recommendations.
I just want to make sure everybody has it because, um, and you want more? And really what it comes down to, oh no, I was gonna get that, I just want you to make sure you have it. Uh, make sure everybody has it. I'm not gonna go through all these strategies, you guys have done this already, but we do want to make sure these are still accurate and pull out any that you may want to highlight, especially in the affordable housing plan. Or are there some that are missed, I shouldn't call it four, but in the housing plan. Um, we also want to see if there's anything missing. Uh, there may be some stuff that came up as far as uh, units that you'd like to see developed that we don't already have on the plate as, as a potential strategy or in your, your master plan. Um, so anyway, starting with goals, increasing diversity of housing options. So we just talked about that, actually, on the, on the regional scale. You're, you're already in line with what's going on. Uh, increasing the supply of affordable housing, making sure the water and sewer infrastructure is in place or that you're building housing in those places where it is available right now. Um, and, but, but it's focusing on.
Martha, do you have a sense for how many accessory units have been, have been moved since we changed it all?
Don't, I don't have a sense. I could find that from, from.
In your research, did you try to find that out?
We didn't, yeah, there's, it's a hard thing to, in fact, Newbury part's doing the same thing right now, they're trying to chalk that down.
Yeah, we just don't know.
Yeah, it's a pretty onerous thing because as, as you made a point in your email to us, Martha, it's, some of those things are hard to track and hard to, the, the numbers just don't.
I just have no idea.
Especially if it's considered, if they say it's a duplex instead of.
I know, we specifically made changes about three and a half years ago.
Yeah.
But.
You know, it's definitely opened it up. I think there were quite a few in the beginning, not so much now.
Are they, are they limited to family? No.
No, no.
No, we specifically did it so that they could be rental and to allow elders to live.
Aggressive in the region.
Do they have to, uh, have to be smaller than like seven hundred square feet or something?
Yeah, it's.
Well, it's, it's a third, I think it's a.
A third of, a third of the size of the main structure.
Or, or maximum house.
Oh, okay.
Um, and, um, but the primary dwelling can't be any smaller than sixteen hundred square feet.
I see, okay.
So number four is to reduce the vulnerability of the talent, probably more so the Plum Island issue, but I, I can imagine that anywhere because of where you are um, related to the coast is an issue with any climate change or potential climate change projections. So I'd love that you have that as a goal. And I come from a resilience background, so that was pretty exciting to see. I haven't seen that in anyone's plan yet. Um, expanding awareness, so really around education. Um, we've been talking about this on a regional scale as well, it'll probably end up being a regional strategy for us is changing that stigma for affordable housing and putting a face to it. In fact, there's a CHAPA, which I never remember what it stands for, but it's the, the states, one of the state's affordable housing advocacy groups has a video called The Faces of Forty B where they really hammer home that these are people that you know, they're going to be our parents someday, they're going, or they potentially could be already. Um, they are school features, they are people that were, you know, it, it shouldn't have a bad stigma to it. There's a lot of people who may not even know they need housing, those are burdened ones that are paying more. So, you know, because not just the folks that are eighty percent and under the area median income are burdened by their housing, you know, as we saw, I think from the map I showed last time, a good percentage of the town is actually housing burdened because they are paying more than thirty percent on both their housing and transportation costs. Um, so it's something to take into consideration. And then last is to encourage housing development, which preserves your natural resources and we, I thought that was a great conversation today about that too. You know, you have some amazing natural resources here and your soil, between your soils maps and your wetlands maps and steep slopes I saw over there too. So those are good resources to take into consideration, although you probably know some of them that hurt at this point, but it's good to see. So some things that came out of those that, that were connected to the themes, um, the twenty-five and thirty-four-year-olds, you know, we saw those, that, that's gonna be a very small piece of your pie potentially in twenty thirty-five. So how do we potentially, we put together the housing production or have housing production that keeps those folks um, both affordability and even style-wise and then close to, you know, access to resources and services and things that, that they say that they want, kind of that they're looking for. Um, conversion of single-family homes into multifamily. And this was actually mentioned as, not a specific strategy, but it was mentioned a little bit as a recommendation in the housing plan first chapter. Um, but, you know, just thinking about access to supportive services and, and again, this could be, these could be accessible units for elderly. But, because they don't all need to live in their own home either. I think that's important to remember. They're accessible units, maybe garden style, so it's easy in and easy out with a wheelchair or a walker. Um, that could be important too. And then cobstow, so that's, we've seen that in a couple of communities, but obviously it needs to be, you know, sewer water or some sort of, how to make the money right.
What is that exactly mean? Is that something like bungal style or when you say cottages?
They're just, yeah, they're smaller, so twelve hundred square feet, you know, thirteen hundred square feet, it's.
Cause here it means, here it means Plum Island, right? How did you, am I right?
So maybe, maybe Plum Island.
Yeah, but denser, it's not, not necessarily an OSRD.
I think I know what you mean.
So, but, so, did you go to the presentation that we did with, at M V P C? I thought you did the.
No, no, but, but, uh, but I was thinking of the units that were built in, uh, West Newbury, up off of.
Yes.
All right, those are about fifteen hundred square feet or something like that.
They are cobstows, she actually calls.
Would you call that cobstow?
And also the ones in Salisbury, that little development right in the center.
Yep, yep, so you, boom, that was exactly, that's exactly what we're talking about.
Okay.
And the ones in West Newbury, maybe, like behind the center of town.
Yeah.
Yep. So unfortunately, um, it's not, it doesn't have Microsoft Word, so I can't, or a Microsoft package, so I can't open up the document. But I'd be happy to take notes and pull, you know, us into the conversation to either look at this document and think about what we should pull forward because ultimately we want this to be your plan and whatever the final recommendations are, whether they're new or existing, you know, how do we mention then all the great work you've already done? This is a lot of work, um, as you know, from doing master plans before, so are there things that you think should potentially be just transitioned directly into your housing plan?
I'd like to throw something out here. I know if we're living in Massachusetts, which doesn't seem to recognize mobile homes as a, as a place to live in. But just about every other state seems to and they're pretty affordable.
Yeah.
How come?
Manufactured houses.
Right.
Yes.
How come we don't even mention that or address that? Newbury, Newbury allows mobile homes, I know that.
Because the land's so expensive.
Yeah, maybe you're right.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is what we came up with when we started looking at this, Fred, is that the land is so expensive that if you could take what would perk for one dwelling and divide it up into four, six, even eight pieces because we used to live in California. And the house, the lot sizes were tiny compared to the size of the house that went up there, but people were pretty happy with that.
Yeah.
And, but that requires that we do the services of water and wastewater.
Well, I understand that, yeah.
And so that's, that's where I'm coming from, but, uh, the same thing with tiny house.
Yeah, well, it's the same idea, right?
Same idea.
A little, little bigger.
Manufacture or, you know, make it yourself, whatever the case is.
Yeah.
Uh, we still have that, that issue to go with and that's infrastructure. And we've, you know, I've been here a long time as well and we've, we've never looked at that, we, you know, looked at the infrastructure that was in that northeast corner of our town that comes from Newburyport.
Yeah.
And now it's out on Plum Island and said, yeah, that was great for them. Okay, well, now we have to look at, if it was great for them, what about the rest of us? What about the rest of the region? Because when we, when I visited the folks down in Ipswich and, uh, I have to tell you, the guys who run the sewer, the wastewater treatment, they're proud of their.
Oh, probably, yeah.
Their plans. And so they're telling me, yeah, this is what we use, this is what we don't use, this is the capacity we have, these are the issues you're gonna have. But they can take all of Rowley. Just run it down One A and go into their plan. They have that kind of capacity. So what we're looking at is, what do we want to do and do we want to do it with anybody else? Do we want to take, you know, one part of Rowley? Or do we want to take another part of Georgetown that would not be developable otherwise, it's down Main Street, goes into their North Street? It would be cooperative as well. I don't know.
The key is the cost. The key is the cost.
Yeah.
Of what you're talking about.
Well, the cost and spreading the cost.
So you're saying in, in order to install that, have discussions with your neighbors to think about it? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on everything.
Your, your thirty-three thousand per bedroom, is that just in the, the treatment or is that included in running sewer lines?
That's a question.
That's the treatment. That's, that's a sewage, that's a treatment plant, a treatment.
So that's.
That's the cost.
No, it's no sewer lines running from your individual homes.
Uh, actually, I think it's, it's to connect everything, yeah. Cause we have.
Yeah, well, it's spread out town, right?
Yeah. Is that never from?
That one plan might make a lot of sense.
Well, what, what they do. Yeah, West Concord is where that number comes from.
Yeah.
It was a. Let me, let me talk to that, because Rick brought us a good point, which is the distribution. And what several people have done in the system in Ipswich is they have collection centers and they run what's called a force main, which is a small, add pressure to their main plant.
Right.
So that it cuts the cost down. And so you can, you can spread out.
Still collect. Same thing Plum Island does, only it's on a vacuum, but yeah, same idea.
Same idea.
Don't have one of those systems.
Okay. So.
So even if we solve the, uh, the water treatment problem in some manner, we still need water, portable water.
Yes.
Yeah. Other than.
And so what's our thinking? Do we know where there is water?
Well, we've, we've looked at that and we've got strategies in both community facilities and land use and economic development.
Do they match up where we think we want to build?
Yeah, right.
Well, it's trying to understand where we think we know the water is and where the resources are and somewhere along.
One of the areas that, that seems to have water and is over in, in Old Town, in Old Town Hill area is a.
Right near here.
Yep.
Right.
Good access of, of water.
And then the other one is at, at property down here.
Yeah, I wonder what quality that water is now.
It needs treatment.
Needs a lot of treatment.
It needs treatment. Um, but those are the two known. And so we do say somewhere in there that the town. And so we do say somewhere in there that the town ought to look at funding a study to determine what it would cost to bring that kind of water. And it's not just to feed Route One, but also to address the issue of potential wells going, or water sources going sullen, which is happening quite a bit. So, in the next ten or fifteen years, my guess is we're gonna have more water. So, you know, so matching that up perfectly is not easy, but...
It's not, and, but what saw the towns have done, and again, talking to the people who are in this industry, is rather than having a flow into the rivers that go out behind Plum Island, is they put it back in the aquifer.
Yeah.
And it's clean enough that it recharges the aquifer, so that you get a better recharge than just...
So what is, but Ipswich Town doesn't do that, do they? They must just put it in the river.
They put it back in the river.
Yeah, yeah.
But if you start getting saltwater infiltration down into the aquifer, that's gonna be an issue.
Right. Yeah, they're, they're up in the Ipswich River, further upstream.
It's an upstream source. Yeah. Engineers would have to figure all that out.
And we are, you know, if you look at the Parker River watershed, we are tapping that really heavily. There's not a lot of capacity.
It's really stressed.
So...
Well, we do have the study that was done by Kathleen about three years ago for her masters in engineering at Northeastern, which looked at water supply as coming from both, well, Byfield, Newburyport, and the Old Town District, so to speak. And I think she found that the least, or the most cost-effective was Newburyport.
Interesting.
But this, that has nothing to do with the politics of it.
Yeah.
But the most cost-effective in terms of where, where the water and sewer is, I mean, it's right here. You know? And we were talking about this area here, and BLI, doesn't take a lot to extend it down in there. But that's a conversation that has not been had yet.
Should you be looking at Plan A and Plan B? Plan B sounds like it's a way down the road.
Meaning B? B, what do you mean, B?
The...
The wastewater.
The large wastewater.
Yeah. And Plan A could be working what you already have and maybe rewriting some regulations, like instead of eighty thousand square feet for a two-family, you could reduce that.
So do you not want to go to another potential, instead of going to the larger municipal one, going to the smaller one that you would initially talked about, which is the site-specific treatment?
Yep, that's, that's one, that's some of the information...
So maybe that's, maybe that's...
Research and bring back.
First one, C, B is the, is the site-specific mechanical system that does the same thing, puts the water back into the, into the system, and then A is, from a zoning point of view, rezoning down or up.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Well, okay, I was thinking a larger scale if we had the storage, but in the meantime, it sounds like it's kind of an urgent nature.
Well, what happens is, I think that your solution becomes costly because it becomes a town-wide solution, where you have to bond for it.
Yes, you, you have to bond for it, you have to look at town-wide or multi-town.
But option B is a developer-specific cost.
Yes, that is correct.
So it's kind of interesting to go that route and see what happens with that.
Because of the poor soils, I'm gonna put in a wastewater treatment system.
In order to get, be able to develop the land in the first place.
Right.
And then A is looking at whether we should be downzoning some of this stuff.
Right. But the zoning, the square footages of the lots go hand-in-hand with the subject of requirements.
Right, yes.
Yeah, where does the forty thousand square feet come from?
It's ten thousand square feet per bedroom, I think, essentially. So if you're looking at... It's an acre. It's a, you know, it's a filter...
Yeah, it's a...
It's a filter, I think.
I believe forty thousand square feet came from having to get water and put sewer...
On the same size.
Same size.
Get the separation.
About an acre.
So that's a good figure, I mean, that's a scientific figure, that's not... Well... It's a good heuristic figure.
I think you're right. Of course, on Plum Island, they were doing it.
Right.
Four hundred square feet.
Well, I, you know, I was thinking on this new, this first one of how do we get to this production, just based on the fact that we have a number of developers now thinking about different kinds of things. And I'm wondering if we can get this in your plan and in our plan, this statement, number one.
Yeah.
How, new, has, that, one of the implementation strategies on top of that is to have people in town, Marshall, myself, others, go meet with developers and talk to them about our need to have a different kind of housing built and see what kind of response we get. Do you know, I mean, it's not a, I mean, I think that it's, there's a mindset out there. I mean, if this is accepted by the town, as, as, as an objective.
Well, you know, I, I looked at that as well, and said, you know, this may be an area in the Iman that gets shot down by town, but I think it's worth considering and doing the work and bringing all the information forward.
Absolutely. And people could, I mean, if we can get selectmen behind it, which is not impossible, and get the town behind it, then it's, then you get, the town wants this, then you can, you've got more strength when you go talk to the developers.
And it goes back to the education component. It's not educating just our residents, but also, you know, the boards that have the need to, because the mantra for so long has been, we don't want young children in a school. You know, over fifty-five is great.
And that, and that's, I'm sure that's ninety percent of the population that feels that way. I'm guessing, but it's, we're a minority who think that, well, we don't need kids. And, and we need to pay for them.
The first paragraph says to encourage twenty-five to thirty-four-year-olds to stay. Would we also say to come?
Yes. And to, thank you.
Attract twenty-five to thirty-four-year-olds.
The first time, are we aware, is anybody aware, any, are there any first-time home buyer programs available through local banks?
Those join, kind of homes.
Really? And so if they're available, are they, do they make a geographical preference, or they just say anybody? So it's a matter of when you guys are, you can, anybody can, are there income requirements?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course. But I mean, what, what people, when I talk to, you know, people who have, you know, children, what they want to look at is, we want to look at where we can live, afford, and what has good schools.
Oh, yeah, it's the schools.
Okay? And so when we talk about what do we want to have in, in Newbury, affordability and good schools, and we've had a long run of having excellent schools. And so that's, you know, our, our track record on schools has been good, but losing that population of us is a real carrying call, just clearing call for all of us to, to look at the fact that we have to look that hard, you know?
I think enough, no skipper. I think the whole process has to be streamlined, though. I think when a developer comes in, I really, you guys do an excellent job, but the, I think it needs to be streamlined so that it's not so costly for the developer.
And that's what you hear.
Absolutely.
You'll hear, you'll hear that's part of the, the high cost of building housing, is land is expensive, materials are expensive, the permitting process is expensive, because it's time, and time is money.
Yeah.
I've heard that over and over and over again from any developer that I've ever talked to. It's just, it's the nature of the beast.
Even though they may have a contingency, is, they've still tied up a chunk of money as a deposit, which...
Well, and, and it's, and nowadays, you can't, you can't go through the permitting process by yourself. You have to hire, you have to hire an attorney to do it, and attorneys don't come to you.
Eventually, yeah.
And a engineer and all that.
And in this day, it's, the, the cost of also addressing many of the wetlands requirements and stormwater requirements is substantial.
Yep.
Whether it be for housing, commercial property, any, I mean, if you see some of the projects that have been built out on Route One, and you look at the detention ponds and the various other kinds of things that have been built, you kind of go, wow, that's a substantial amount of engineering. And so it costs a lot to build here. It just does. And there's no doubt, I'm not defending the, the process, but when, when you're sitting in front of angry neighborhoods, and neighbors come in and they're screaming about the change that's about to happen to their property because we're allowing a new development to occur.
And that has to be frustrating for you, because, you know, they, they bought a home here, they like the neighborhood, they like the area, why all of a sudden do they want to close the door and not allow anything?
That's it, that's it, that's the expression they always used to use. I'm here, close the door.
So we do have, when you look, I mean, look at this map, I mean, that's why this business and light industrial area is kind of attractive. There's not many neighbors around there. There's one or two, but not many. And there's some other areas that are kind of more isolated, but you get into trouble when you've got these properties that are surrounding existing subdivision.
I'd like to play the devil's advocate now, because you know I do that all the time. Anyway...
Fred, that's why we invite you to...
But you, you mentioned talking with builders, and, you know, we're all in agreement here pretty much as to what the problem is and everything, but what are the builders going to build? As long as their market is good for forty thousand square foot lots and big houses, that's what they're gonna build.
Well, that's what I think, first of all, the constraint, physical constraints make the amount of buildable land quite clearly very low in this town, which is going to keep the price of the land up forever. It's gonna keep going up.
Well, until the market collapses, which may happen tomorrow, but, yeah.
That's true. Yeah. But if you do talk to the developers, it would be interesting to see what would incentivize them to cooperate or to, I think it's a good idea when they could make a buck and still build small, you know, similar houses, so you're, I keep calling it cluster development, open space residential, I mean, but it could be for affordable, it doesn't have to be over fifty-five, it can be the same type of development for...
Well, except for the ANRs, that'd be quite, quite, quite frequently, where you'll just get a new house and another house.
Right.
The real subdivisions that we've looked at in the last five or six years have all been OSRDs, and they've all made their lots smaller. Not necessarily the houses smaller.
Right. You knew I was gonna chop on that.
Except, except for Colby Village, though.
That's a pretty good size, too.
They're big houses.
Yeah.
But there must be a, there must be a balance here somewhere where you could...
That's a pretty good size.
And I think, I think the size may be starting to change, and the market is starting to pick up for fifteen hundred square foot homes instead of thirty-eight hundred.
We originally had a proposal for where the driving range is gonna go.
It's the open space.
From the Green Company, from New Hampshire. They've done that project across from the C&amp;J parking lot in Newburyport.
Behind Russell Terrace.
Behind Russell Terrace, and they're, they're the, you know, eighteen hundred square foot bungalows, and they sold for four fifty-nine, which is, but for Newburyport, that's kind, that's kind of like an affordable price. And it's a great project, and it's dense, and it sold very well. They, they were gonna do the same thing on Jim Sullivan's property, and got three perks. Maybe, as, as JR says, he didn't perk the right places, but that's why they moved away from that. But we could, we could have gone after that in a heartbeat.
I'd like to ask the, the real turn of room. Who, yeah, okay, who, who would be buying those, what you just described, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar, smaller eighteen hundred square foot home? What, is it a family? Is it, is it family with kids and...
Well, now you have all kinds of people, I mean, you have single professionals and...
It opens up to everybody. Single women, single professionals, single men.
Yeah.
Young families.
And elders.
Elders.
And the nice thing about those kind of communities is when you mix the whole demographic from small family, they all look out for each other and...
You drive down this, this neighborhood on, I know the name of the street is, but, I mean, there's kids playing in the street, there's parents doing this, there's that, I mean, it's a great, great mix of people, and everybody's involved.
What's it called, Ole O'Woods?
Ole O'Woods.
Ole O'Woods.
Because now they're in the suburbs. Right, I know.
Are they really?
They are.
But I was right on the initial price, right?
I was gonna say, if you drive down through there, you see more outies and Lexuses than you see boards.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of healthy, you can tell the economy right now.
Range road, this place is full.
I think they're trying to do the same thing on Evergreen Golf Course.
Oh, do you know, who's that developer?
Same, uh, the same one who did the one in West Newbury, the cottages.
Oh, that's right. I thought that came out pretty well.
But that's an over fifty-five as well.
Oh, it is?
In West Newbury. But that, those are, yeah, they're really well done, too.
Yeah, they are. You've got great views in West Newbury.
What else might be missing? Yeah, and I wanted to be sure we're not missing anything. Like I said, you, you have a great chapter already with a lot of recommendations in there. If there are any flags that you would not like to see moved over, although, I'm not sure that even makes sense to ask, because you obviously went through all this, but, you know, I'm happy to translate, you know, we can translate them all into, or transfer them all into...
Well, maybe, maybe if it's okay, maybe ask all of the participants to read them over and to get comments to Martha.
That, that'd be great.
If you have any comments on these all.
Okay.
All right?
Everybody has a copy.
If everybody, you know, thinks they'd like to add or subtract anything from the goals and objectives, get them to Martha within the next week.
Right.
No, no, next week.
Okay, next week. And John.
Just one question.
Yeah.
When you, when you, I've talked about it in the second and third line, fostering community connectivity, and, and I, I don't know what that means.
Uh, I, it wasn't, this is from the master plan, so, but I would imagine maybe that's physical and social, so maybe, you know, reducing cul-de-sacs and putting in sidewalks, but also...
Second and third line in, in under vision.
Oh, under vision, sorry, sorry.
Oh, there's, I don't have... Oh, okay.
Yeah. I guess, kind of like what, what John was talking about earlier, is, you know, civic pride and getting people to come to meetings and being part of the community fabric, I guess. I don't know. Did you, you guys came up with the vision? It sounds good, but it's a good question.
And it was in the last master plan as well, not recognizing the fact that we are in fact three different and sometimes aggressively warring communities.
I think that's what this was supposed to be, realizing, by the way, realizing the futility of trying to say it, it's probably better to say community pride, but throw the connectivity in and just hope for that people might try to understand it.
Good question, though.
Most of them.
Most of them.
Maybe there's another way to say it, get the same idea across. That's true.
Well, do you guys have enough to work on, everything?
Yeah, I thought there were some, some great new strategies, and you already had a great, you had something to start with.
Yeah, and I think this map, we need to get this back, because we need this for our master plan. We need to, we're gonna develop.
Oh, we're gonna, this will be translated into, into map, through RJI.
Oh, good, oh, good.
It'll be part of your final product.
When will you do that?
Oh, December.
I guess that's fine.
I mean, we could probably do it sooner, but the endgame is the...
We could use this for our master plan.
We could use this for our master plan. Don't you think so?
Yeah. Can you take a picture?
Can you take a picture?
Yeah. And you can at least have a.
George will take a picture.
Take a picture. You're very helpful.
Well, thank you all for coming. I do have a.
Thank you.
There was a age-friendly community flyer that was going around. And I would encourage the town to take a look at this as well, and it could be a strategy that you'd like to add to this group, and I'm sorry, I'm just remembering this, but they, we, we only have one community in our region that is an age-friendly community right now, which is Lawrence, and they just adopted it. I know, amazing. So.
I know what you mean.
The Massachusetts chapter of, um.
That's why I.
AARP is behind this, and it's a, it's a step program, basically. It's, um, it's got a lot of really nice strategies to encourage, um, community members to stay connected to their community, which is probably a little bit, John was talking about, but, you know, so that dementia folks or people who have disabilities have outlets and they have resources to be connected to, especially if they had a spouse pass away or, um, or are in trouble in some way. So it's, and it's also for financial reasons. I mean, there's a lot of, if you go into the website, you'll see all the steps that they use. They call them pedals. So it's strategies that, kind of areas of, of, of work that we need to do to make sure that our friendlies are, excuse me, our communities are age-friendly. So I encourage you to take a look at, it's actually pretty interesting. We've been working with this guy, James Wachioni, who's the Age, Healthy Aging Collaborative, um, coordinator, I guess is his title, and with, we're going to be starting to work with the Elder Services of Merrimack Valley as well, um, to start implementing this across the region. So hopefully, we join the map of communities, as you can see, it's very sparse. Actually, they cut off our region on the back, so it's, it's pretty sad. So we hope to change that, and the next time they put this out, we'll have, we'll have a, a large population of, of dots. They also have these cafes that they call memory cafes, which are churches and, not really physically a cafe, but churches and other safe places where people with dementia or with disabilities can go, um, if they're over sixty-five, for services and just to chat and to become part of the community.
So this is more services and not, not related to housing or zoning specifically?
It's, it's related to housing, too, yeah. So there's banking stuff that goes along with this, so assistance if someone might, you know, be in jeopardy of losing their home. It'll be active, probably till.
Okay. We just have a couple of things we need to go over.
Wonderful. Nice to meet you. Yeah, nice to meet you, too. Good to see you.
So the first is, bye-bye, you guys.
Yes, thank you for coming. Um, and I just wanted to mention, sorry, where did I start again? The presentation from tonight will be uploaded to the, um, website, which is on the bottom of your agenda, um, tomorrow morning. So if you want to see the numbers.
Oh, so now Karen sent me a copy of the, uh, Larry Field's presentation, from last, last meeting. Is that on your website, too? Or is it just?
I'm not sure we put it up. We may have, but I don't know for sure.
So I think I sent it to all of you earlier this evening. I'll, I'll tell you about that.
Oh, the zoning requirement?
Yeah, the zoning requirement.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we put it up on our website. Thank you. You're welcome. Take a check.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Okay. So, all right, Board of Selectmen, what do you think?
Mostly the golf center.
Golf center. So just for everybody, we will be, you think, writing that opinion, you're writing the opinion now, and Janice is writing for the Board of Selectmen.
Right, she and I will collaborate probably.
And we'll have that for November fifteenth. And then Board of Fields.
Board of Fields. George Kellerman, Plum Island, Sandy's, you know, Sandy's at Two Northern Boulevard. He's seeking a special permit for operation of existing non-conforming use, and he's been doing that for some time. Parking lot has been rediscovered, he scraped everything off, so that's.
This is the old jeans.
Oh, jeans, okay, perhaps. Rem named. In a prior meeting, George asked for permission to use the premises as a paid parking lot in a temporary basis. ZPA recruited the Board of Selectmen, or he asked for a temporary permit, when he was referring to the planning board.
Which he hasn't come to yet.
He's come to mine, right?
No.
He has not come. Okay. All right. That was continued, as usual, with what I told George's Phoenix. Mark Giannos and Brenda and Robert Clarizia, Fifty-One Pearson Drive, they bought a lot, uh, in a subdivision, built in nineteen seventy-eight.
Right, they bought the lot in eighty-two.
In eighty-two, and they didn't build a house fast enough or do something on it, which I think was eight years, Martha.
It was eight years.
So they're requesting a variance so they can build a house or use a lot. And.
What location?
Fifty-One Pearson Drive. That's not near the entry to the Forty-A or Forty-B.
Yeah, it's two lots away.
Two lots away, yeah. And that was continued. He asked, the applicant asked for a continuance, and they were not there. David R. Coleman, Twenty-Six Northern Boulevard, Plum Island, special permit to increase lot coverage. Discussion about excess lot coverage caused by a stairway showed on the plan.
By a what?
A stairway that extended out and created excess lot coverage. So they've gone back to modify their plan. We'll bring it back in again. That was Doug Packer's suggestion. So that was continued, and then Sharon Bresnahan, Thirty-One Annapolis Way, and this, I think she's trying to put together three lots.
On, that are on the ocean side?
Yeah, yeah. And special permit for both.
Well, there's two, I know there's two that are on the market right now.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's all contingent on this. Special permit for both, Bresnahan, permit for increased lot coverage and building height. Doug Packer talked about several issues, including proposed base floors in Sanheim, which was, some height was just like two and a half inches off. So they said, yes, they have to redesign that. The drawings were not to scale, footprint area ratio issue with respect to three lots combined at one. That was continued, because I have much more work to do.
So when was this meeting?
On the twenty-first of September.
So do you meet again tomorrow?
Morning.
Okay.
I will not be at that meeting.
Wow, okay. All right, Concon.
Yeah, we met last night, went to a meeting, and there are a couple items that I think would be of interest to this group. First is, nothing yet on the driving range. Doug assumes they're going to try to modify their notice of intent, but it hasn't been.
Oh, really? That's interesting. Have they talked to you about any of this? What they're doing in terms of redesign?
The other one that is of interest, we kind of touched on it earlier, that the, there's an NRAD, abbreviated Notice of Resource Area Delineation. I've never noticed anything abbreviated about that process, but anyway, that was completed now for that area on Coleman, uh, Orchard, yeah. Yeah, that would be, uh, south and to the west of the entrance at Pearson Drive there. And this is a guy who's been talking about an OSRD of fourteen homes.
Right.
Bill Luster.
Bill Luster. Does he be there?
No. The guy, I Googled him, Philip Singleton is the developer, and he's done work in, uh, in the area here. He did an OSRD in, uh, his company name is Charing Cross Realty.
Right.
And he did Atlantic Crossing in Swarmska, which I looked into, it was actually a pretty nice development. Anyway, there were a number of Butters there, and naturally, they feel just besieged from either side there.
Right.
Pearson Drive, and then the right and the left, and, well, anyway. So I, I, I think it's pretty clear that this developer's going to go forward. The other one that was interesting, but I didn't totally understand, and maybe this is what you touched on a minute ago, is a, a notice of intent put together by the department, you know, here, DPW, for improvement of an inadequate drainage system and redevelopment of an area permitted and used as a municipal gravel sand fill storage area on Plum Island. And there are a bunch of Plum Island residents there that were all excited about a meeting, I guess, with the selectmen, where the selectmen suggested that they might allow parking on this area.
Well, there's been a lot of discussion about, there's no parking lot on the table right now, so it really is just to improve the drainage there, and it's being used for storage, excuse me, for the DPW. There is concern.
This is an Olga Way.
It's Olga Way, yeah.
Olga Way, yes, Olga Way.
And there's concern about, you know, potential for it to be used as a parking lot in the future, but that's not on the table.
But I think there, there was some meeting where the selectmen suggested that they might allow parking for special events.
Well, that's.
Now and then. And the people saw this as a first step toward something really upsetting. You know, the camel's nose under the tent, got into all kinds of issues, like we have drunks falling down in this parking area that's used. They sued the city, they sued the Butters.
Wasn't it once used as parking?
It has been in the past. Not in recent history, but.
It's a, it's a major issue, and it wasn't clear to me exactly what the selectmen had said, but it ignited this issue. So we, we continued it. They would like the Concon to forbid the use as a parking lot, which really isn't our jurisdiction.
Right, and I just said there's going to be a sidewalk and then.
Yeah, so that was, we said, well, we'll go take a look at the place, we'll do a sidewalk a week after next. But a lot of, a lot of concern. That's it.
MVPC, um, last meeting was really quite good. Larry Field, who's the executive, Deputy Executive Director of the Mass Smart Growth Alliance, was, and he called me on this as well, House Bill twenty-four twenty, which is the zoning change, change the enabling legislation in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, for a number of different items, some of which we, I think, have applicability for us.